Good evening, everybody, for our second go this evening. And thank you for joining us. We do have a few speakers tonight, so I would like to move on quite quickly. So if our Reverend Reverend Peter Ashman would like to say prayers, and any of you who wish to participate, please join us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everybody. We're now in the fifth week of Lent with next Sunday being Palm Sunday, the following Sunday being Easter Day. So we're really coming towards the end of Lent now. So you can start uncorking the wine and unwrapping the chocolates as soon as you like. It was interesting, these reading on Sunday was all about prayer not being a shopping list, but being about relationships and faith and building the kingdom where we are. And the sermon was all about politicians avoiding answering questions and interviewers trying to put words in their mouth. I wasn't thinking of the town council at the time, obviously. But let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for all those gathered here this evening. We pray for the work of the councils, it strengthens community and enriches society. We pray for the mayor and mayoress, deputy mayor and deputy mayoress, for all council officers, employees, contractors and volunteers. We pray for the businesses in town hoping to open again soon and for forthcoming visitors. And especially at this time, we pray for the work of the COVID testing stations, the vaccination centres, the hospital and hospice and all those involved in caring for our community. So we pray for health and safety, for vision and understanding. May we all share God's love by looking after those around us and making this a better place. We pray for our families and friends giving thanks for their love and support. We ask all this in Jesus' name. Amen. And I invite you to join me in the words of the Lord's Prayer. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread and forgive us our trespasses as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, the power and the glory forever and ever. Amen. Thank you for inviting me to join you for prayer. I hope you have a very good meeting.
Thank you, Peter. Thank you very much. As I said earlier, we've got five speakers, I believe, tonight for this part of our meeting. So I would like to ask the five to try and keep their their words to us between two and three minutes, because we have 15 minutes set aside, but that can obviously be stretched slightly. So if we can just keep it to the point, I'd be really grateful. But it's in no particular, but the order that it came through to me. So is first speaker Angela Hicks, please.
Good evening, everyone. I hope you can hear me. My name's Angela Hicks and I am the Chief Executive of Two Social Enterprises Enterprises based here in Weston Super Mayor. One of them, the North Somerset Enterprise Agency provides business and advice and support to new and existing businesses. The other, The Hive, provides pream excellent managed office space and conference space for local businesses to trade from. The Hive opened in 2014 and from day one, we provided fair trade, coffee, tea and sugar at all our seminars and to anyone hiring our conference rooms. Prior to COVID-19 hitting, our workspace was 100% occupied with many tenants and centre users citing the ethical credentials of our business model as being important to them. By purchasing and supplying fair trade goods for our customers, we feel that we're in short, we're helping to ensure that other businesses in faraway countries are getting a fair deal. We want to know that producers in our supply chain have healthy and safe, health and safety measures in place and not exploiting children and adults by using slave labour and that they're being paid a fair price for their produce. As a business, this is important to us, not only from a corporate social responsibility and leadership point of view, but because we also know that our customers, competitors and local and central government who we contract with are increasingly seeking out and buying from those who take business ethics and sustainability seriously. We also know that 90% of consumers in the UK have heard about the fair trade mark. 80% trust it as a recognisable, ethical standard. And 77% of us actively choose fair trade products over non-fair trade items. So by selecting and promoting use of fair trade products, we feel that this is just one of the ways in which we're providing evidence of corporate social responsibility and sustainability activities. We know that fair trade is good for our profitability. We're helping to meet customer demand. It's adding positivity to our brand and it gives us our customers an extra reason to choose us over our competitors. We also want to encourage the businesses we support in the in the area to create passionate employees and customers, grow their profits through product, service and business model innovation, whilst at the same time protecting precious resources of future generations. Fair trade can be an important part of this journey. Western Town Council, along with many others, have declared a climate emergency. It is of paramount importance, therefore, I feel, that it helps to ensure that local consumers and supply chains are not endangering habitats or people or inflicting a massive carbon footprint elsewhere on the planet. Fair trade is one way the world can become a better, fairer and greener place, one little step at a time. The standard helps producers manage the fertility, dispose of waste properly, avoid the use of GMOs, monitor their impact on the environment and helps to implement ways to reduce that impact. Paying a fair price for goods that we cannot produce locally, plus a premium to improve access to education, healthcare, clean waste and infrastructure is surely enabling free trade to operate in a way that benefits everybody. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Angela. I'm sure that will be noted when we get to the discussions later. So Brian Price, is he with us tonight?
Brian, you're still muted. You need to unmute.
Brian, you're still on mute? I can come back whilst you're looking for the mute button.
Apologies for that.
You've muted again, Brian. You must have put your paper on it. That's it? Yeah, that's fine.
Right, okay. Apologies for the computer error here. Probably not the most IT savvy. Right, as I was saying, good evening, Mr. Mayor and councillors. My name's Brian Price. I've been a Western resident for nearly 40 years. I'm not a member of a political party and the reason I mention this is because the issue under discussion tonight transcends party politics. After all, there are fair trade communities across the country of all political persuasions. Fair trade is about how we relate to people, to the people who work extremely hard, often in dreadful conditions, to provide us with the commodities we need. By becoming part of the fair trade movement, we can ensure they get these, these people get a fair recompense for their efforts, improving their health and wellbeing and strengthening their communities. It won't solve all their problems, beset as many of them are by the impacts of the pandemic, climate change, local armed conflicts and similar difficulties. But to borrow a supermarket slogan, every little helps. So what will becoming a fair trade town mean for Weston? Well, in terms of the refreshments served, not very much in terms of difference. Fair trade products need not be any more expensive than those from other sources and the quality can be just as good. To give an example, fair trade coffee brands won over 28 Great Taste Awards between 2016 and 2019. But becoming a fair trade town is not just about refreshments, although it is a start. It's about leadership. It's about inspiring people to think about their choices. And it's about working with retailers to increase the range of fair trade products available in the hope that people will switch some of their ethical purchasing from the internet and back into shops in the town. Businesses are being forced to adapt to changes at the moment and including fair trade principles is hardly onerous, given the other things they're having to do. And finally, and by no means least importantly, it's about pride in doing something which improves the lives of people who provide us with the food and drink we enjoy. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Again, we'll take those comments into account a little bit later on during the the motion. And now we have Debbie Apted. Please, Debbie.
Hello. Hope you can hear me okay?
Fine.
Good. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councillors. My name is Debbie Apted and I'm Secretary of Weston Chamber of Commerce and also Community Lead for Plastic-Free Weston Super Mayor. Three and a half years ago, Weston Chamber of Commerce and Weston and We're Mercury asked this council to support our Cleaner Coastlines campaign for Weston to aim for plastic-free community, plastic-free community accreditation from Surfers Against Sewage. Similar to the Fair Trade Initiative, we had to achieve five objectives, one of which was that this council pass a resolution to support us and lead by example. We had no idea at that time what it, where it would take us, but we were delighted to have the unanimous support of this council to start our journey. And immediate actions were taken by you to remove avoidable single-use plastic from your premises at Grove Hart, Grove Grove Park, sorry, Grove House, the Blake Hay, Weston Museum and the Visitor Information Centre. Having met the five objectives, Weston was granted plastic-free community status by Surfers Against Sewage just nine months after the council passed the resolution. So three years into our campaign, we now have 50 accredited plastic-free business champions in town. They give consumers a real choice to avoid single-use plastic and packaging in shops, cafes, takeaways, restaurants, visitor attractions, as well as from accommodation providers. Our Cleaner Coastlines group continues to work with businesses, residents, community groups and the like to raise awareness of plastic pollution. The fair trade ethos would complement what we have already achieved with the plastic-free campaign by providing a similar choice for ethical consumers. Consumer pressure works, as evidenced not only by the surge in more environmentally friendly products and packaging we're now seeing, but also the move to free-range eggs and fair trade bananas. This council only last year agreed to pay its employees a real living wage as a minimum to lead as an example. Surely it follows that goods supplied and used by the council also support good employment practices, thus raising awareness of the importance of ethical shopping. As a Chamber of Commerce, we continue, of course, to support local businesses and producers. But for goods that cannot be sourced in the UK, a fair trade accreditation ensures imported products are not exploiting others. Also, if there is appetite to promote Weston as a sustainable tourism destination, this can only be enhanced by Weston becoming a fair trade town. If achieving the five objectives for our plastic-free campaign is anything to go by, the Fair Trade Campaign will provide additional and welcome opportunities for community engagement. Weston being seen as a fair trade town and encouraging businesses to operate with integrity has to be seen as an advantage. And Weston Chamber of Commerce fully supports this initiative, which is in keeping with our own mission of cultivating a local business network of members offering community, support and opportunity. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Debbie. Thank you very much. Now we have Dr. Richard Lawson. I know you're on the call. Richard, you're on. That's it. You got it?
I have just found out how to do that. Well, thank you very much indeed for allowing us to speak about fair trade. Just to give an overview, in colonial times, companies paid the minimum price for goods consistent with not having their fathers die of starvation. This has unfortunately continued so that a farmer typically gets only 10% of what his product gets on the commodity market. And of course, an even smaller percentage of the retail price in the shops. The farmer may get sometimes less than his costs and then he is forced to leave the farming altogether and maybe go to the town where he may find himself in a slum or in a starvation condition. Fair trade works by sitting down with the farmer and agreeing a price that will pay for his family's food and other basic needs. Fair trade then negotiates with purchasing companies to accept this price and also a premium of around 10%, which goes to feed back into community projects such as schools and pharmacies and other things to improve the, to lift up the community itself. Since setting up in 1997, Fair Trade has helped about 1.66 million farmers and producers. Its sales are worth nine billion pounds worldwide. The premiums have passed some 832 million pounds to local communities. It covers 4,500 products and 2,400 companies are involved. Fair trade, like everything else, is not perfect, but it is a project that is very, very well worth supporting. And I very much hope that Weston Town Council will decide to support the Fair Trade Initiative. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Lawson. Must appreciate it. And last but definitely not least is Chris Mayer.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councillors for allowing me the opportunity to speak on behalf of the motion. My name is Chris Mayer and I make my address as a resident and business owner. We have a podiatry clinic and shoe shop on the boulevard. For so many of us, the last 12 months has been testing, to say the least, for myriad reasons. And for many retailers, it has been the final nail in the coffin. I wonder if many might suggest now is not the time. That said, to see some of the really positive plans for our town centre start to take shape via the Weston placemaking strategy, perhaps now is exactly the time. The placemaking strategy is littered with examples of Weston seemingly regaining some confidence in itself. Outwardly looking, talking of connectivity, sustainability and its growth. I know a lot of buzzwords, right? But buzzwords we share with fair trades. We claim in our own Weston prospectus that we recognise the structural changes to shopping habits means that people spend more money on food, drink and experiences and less money on physical things they need when they visit town centres. I believe us being a fair trade town can only benefit that outlook. As a town, we are reasserting ourselves on our place on the map. And we are much more than just donkey rides and cheeky postcards, as great as they may be. We are a community that strives to look out for each other. We have seen countless examples of this over the last 12 months and longer. Whether that be coming together to help those shielding from the pandemic, doing shopping or prescription runs for people we've never met before, school uniform exchanges, laptops for school kids, hot meals for our homeless folk, the list goes on. It seems that we pride ourselves at looking after those that need help and provide them the empowerment to better their lives. Empowerment is at the core of what fair trade do. It is possible for businesses and communities to come together to create a roadmap for a better, fairer future for all of us and not just confined to our own town borders. I know that businesses can come together and not just with profit for themselves in mind. We did. We worked quite proudly with the Mercury Suez and a few others alongside the Cleaner Coastline campaign that sponsored the poster competition to raise awareness of the scourge of plastic pollution and a focus in order to improve our coastline. It was really positive to be ahead of the curve, to be working toward the betterment of our environment, ourselves and others. I'm really pleased to be advocating for something apolitical. This is a project we can all support. We might not agree on everything all the time, but for me, the notion of fairness and fair play has always been a very British ideal. Weston Town Council, to be supporting fair trade farmers and workers by approving this motion would be a great unifying place to hang our collective hats as we move forward together out of this pandemic and toward a more positive and fairer future for all. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Chris. And that is the speakers. I just wanted to make sure that I hadn't made a muddle in the first the first annual meeting, just to check that none of the people who were listed on the first annual meeting wanted to speak at this meeting? Or were they intending to speak and had the wrong meeting? If you were intending to speak, can you please say so now? Okay, I'll assume that's a case of not. So just for those, thank you very much for the the presentations that you've given us tonight. I am going to take the liberty to move the motions up the agenda tonight, so you don't have to sit all evening listening to the the boring parts of our agenda, as well as the interesting bits you might wish to stay and you're always very welcome to. But I will be moving up to just after the towns, the town mayor's announcements. So I'll move on the agenda immediately. Apologies for absence, please.
Mr. Mayor, we've had apologies from councillor Lisa Pilgrim.
Thank you. Any from the floor? I see Mark is with us now, so welcome, Mark.
Yeah.
Okay, so declarations of interest? Okay, thank you very much. So the accuracies of the minutes for January the 25th, 2001. Can I have a proposal? These are a true and accurate recording of the meeting?
Peter proposed, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Has a P proposed and councillor Cruz seconded, I believe, then in that order. Is that okay?
Yeah.
I'm going to ask if anybody is opposed to those or against those minutes. Councillor, who say?
I'm not, I'm not saying I'm totally against, but I would like to make a statement. Page three, after point five, I wish to stress the concern still held by my colleagues and I by the passing of the last-minute budget increase to be described as a small net amendment. However, it may equate to a band D property for many residents in the town, £45,000. Collectively equates to a lot of money. It was political stealth slipped in just hours before the meeting and in my opinion, unbecoming of a parish council handling other people's money.
Okay, I don't think that was the appropriate part to make that statement.
Well, wherever.
Okay, we've made it now and I've seen it happen many a times before by your group. So just moving on, if there's no other comments on the minutes? Okay, I'll assume that no one's voted against. Councillor, I don't know if you're abstaining. If so, please show. So everyone else is, so you're abstaining, okay? Any, any, any other abstentions? Okay, and therefore those minutes are passed. Thank you. Okay, so mayor's announcements, there are, there are none. So that's very simple. So we'll leave that straight at that. So I'm bringing up the motions to the agenda now. So as I said, for the previous reasons, so members of the public who don't want to sit around for two hours listening to the other bits are very welcome to listen to this debate now. So you will have the papers for the the motions. They are somewhere.
Mr. Mayor, they're actually on the agenda itself.
So item 14 will go to the motions fair trade. So councillor Peter McAlaire, please.
Thank you, Chair. Right, I'm pleased to be able to to tail this long-held hope. I think it's important to say first of all that I'm just the spokesman, I'm just the front man for the steering group and a little bit wider, the community for an initiative that needs to be a partnership. So despite lockdown, the limbo which is lockdown, we've kept busy action planning, networking, zooming. I haven't been shy of engaging with the bear pit, which is social media. There is a will. People cannot be forced into selling fair trade products, but there's a definite will. Someone talked about the recognition of the fair trademark, which has never been higher. Nine out of 10 people both recognise it and trust it as a logo. If further reassurances are needed, then here's a couple. The council motion here is just goal one of five, as I think Debbie said. It is a commitment, but it's quite cautious. It uses the phrase to make progress towards a couple of times. It's a journey. It'll take longer. Tonight isn't the be all and end all of anything, but it's a good first step. Some people point out on Facebook, for example, that there might be a threat to our own trade and business in the town. Well, of course, it's pointed out that these goods, tea, coffee, bananas and so on, are not grown here. There's there's no threat unless we start growing coffee and tea in Grove Park. I don't mean to be flippant. There's also no financial cost to this. Some goodwill would be welcome occasionally and sponsorship, as in fair trade fortnight, is useful backing. But to reassure people, I think it's true, talking to people in Zoom meetings from Pill and Portishead, Sanford and Wiskam, Winskam. It is not something which is going to accrue a great deal of expense for councillors to fork out. I've been liaising nationally with the Fair Trade Foundation in helping to achieve our aims. And I think, just to repeat, I think it it dovetails perfectly with the work we've been doing on climate change, cleaner coastlines and plastic-free and so on. I assume people have read the background I posted, but a quick, very quick summary. The foundation's strategy is unashamedly ambitious and it's working very well. We're talking about reducing global poverty, exploitation, modern slavery, community pre-immunisation, which stemmed from Sustainable Development Goals and wider improvements in education, in housing, in medicine. And a big priority is limiting environmental problems like cutting greenhouse gases, which affects the whole planet, of course. So the question boils down to, is it too much to ask for a decent return for a hard day's work? At first, I did find bits of this process intimidating. I think quite rightly, it shouldn't be an easy process. For example, the audits of products in the Western shops. But a couple of volunteers sprang up this week and said, yeah, we'll tackle that aspect. So I do think from what you've heard and what you will see, that the will is definitely there. I would look to, although we've got Blake Hay and we've heard of other places, we've got the museum who sell a range of fair trade goods, I would look to increase that range and availability if possible. But finally, for Weston, I believe that this is a, well, it's a real chance to restore our town by avoiding traps of narrow attitudes, becoming insular and parochial. I think creating an outward-looking idea within the placemaking strategy of renewal for the town fits in perfectly well. So make no mistake, this helps everyone abroad and here in Weston. So please pass this motion.
Thank you very much. Councillor Payne, did you want a second? I was under the pressure, wanted a second.
Yeah, that's right, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. I'm happy to second the motion. Of course, we we can't tell people what products they should buy and nor should we. But if we can help to encourage people to make more ethical choices, that has to be the right thing to do. And it's for us really to take the lead in in matters like that. By buying, by favouring fair trade products, we we can ensure that producers get a fair deal. But also, we ensure that they follow good standards, preventing pollution, using energy more responsibly and so on. So lots of ways, it's beneficial to us and to the world. The motion and councillor McAlaire have talked about following our neighbours who have already achieved free trade status. In fact, I understand that over 600 communities up and down the country have have already achieved fair trade status. And I I don't want Weston to be left behind in that. And I just want to say that a lot of people seem to be under the impression that fair trade products are more expensive, but that absolutely isn't the case. It's about paying a fair proportion of the price of products to the producers, not just increasing the price. In fact, I believe that many people buy fair trade products in supermarkets without even noticing it. All the major supermarkets, including the discounters and all of them, they all stock fair trade products and usually at no different price from from anything else. So yes, I'm happy to second the motion and I hope everyone will support it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Payne. Councillor Gibbons?
Thank you. I'd just like to say, I've got a very small amendment that I'd like to propose, but I'd just like to say a few words about how pleased I am to be able to support this motion. Much has been said that I would have said, so I won't repeat what our really excellent speakers said at the beginning of the meeting. But I would just remind people that 40% of fair trade workers and 22% of fair trade farmers are actually women and children. And fair state trade standards prohibit child labour as defined by the ILO. So while no organisation can absolutely So while no organisation can absolutely guarantee the non-existence of child labour, fair trade organisations guarantee that if child labour is detected, we will act to protect the impacted children. It helps protect the natural environment as well, restrict rules on pesticides, biodiversity, energy use and reducing the carbon footprint. Fair trade enables small-scale farmers and workers to drive toward a better future for all. Investments in community development is a key use of the fair trade premium. It sparks wider economic and social and environmental change. And I can attest to that because a family member of mine worked very hard for many years with Oxfam and used to be a buyer for their Oxfam trading goods, which were, where possible, fair trade. And I've personally seen the difference that it can make to particularly women's cooperatives in developing countries. And I'm wearing fair trade earrings as a testament to that. The small amendment I would like to propose is that in the penultimate paragraph where councillor McAllaire's motion says, in particular, fair trade, tea, coffee and sugar are usually available as refreshment options. We further resolve to review our procurement policy to ensure this is taken into account. I would like to add, and to appoint, a named council representative to support this. I'd also like to propose that councillor McAllaire should be that representative. Is that possible to do that in this one amendment chair? Or do we have to pass the amendment and then elect the representative?
I will have to go to Malcolm for that. I would have thought that would have had to been done at our next AGM, but Malcolm can.
Well, outside appointments are, yes, appointments to posts and champions and so on are normally made at the annual meeting. Rather than resolving a name in the motion.
Fairness law, I suppose that that is going to be in about six or so weeks' time anyway, so I'm sure I'm sure Pete would be more than happy to wait until then to, as long as the other things are moving through. But the point's well made, Catherine, and yes.
Okay.
So just, yeah, so just don't put a name, but appoint a fair trade champion or something you want to.
Well, the fine I have is to appoint a named council representative to support this.
Okay.
It's seen in that penultimate paragraph after the word taken into.
Does the proposal second support that?
So I'm proposing.
Pete's proposing. Are you happy with that, Peter?
Yep, that's, that's fine. That's wonderful.
That's okay.
Yes, I'm happy with that, yeah.
So that's taken on board within the motion now.
Thank you.
Anyone, anyone else would like to speak to this, please? Please show. Wow, I think that's going to be interesting then. That's it, I think. Please shout if I've missed you. Okay, so then. I think it's such an important issue. I'm going to, rather than doing it in reverse as usual, I'm going to ask for councillors who are in favour of this to show, but please give us time to count. So please show those who are in favour.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14.
It's everybody, Malcolm. There's no one, everyone's voted. It's unanimous.
I'm just, it's just I'm having to scroll over two papers. I can't see anyone that's any councillor, actually. There's one councillor not supporting it. I won't name anyone.
Was there one opposed? Anyone opposed to it? I mean, I'm calling that back. Anyone abstain?
It's almost everybody, Mr Mayor.
But I think that, I think that's an important issue. I think it was everybody. So is there anybody opposed? And if you're, and please don't be embarrassed to stand against what you believe. That's what you're here for. Anyone abstaining? It is fully.
Okay.
It is voted by all. So I think that's a, thank you for the members of public who have come along and spoken tonight. And it has been fully supported. So we will move forward on that in the very near future and have someone you'll be able to speak to and represent on the council at the AGM at the beginning of May. So, and you're very welcome to stay on if you want to listen to the rest of the meeting and just dive out when you're ready. So item 15, which is the motion, hidden disabilities from councillor Sarah Codling.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I hope you can hear me. And I hope actually that this might piggyback in terms of the principles discussed in the last motion around fairness and us working together. And I do sincerely hope members might feel able to agree to the motion and in so doing indicate demonstrable support for the dignity of all our residents and visitors, as well as adopting a really clear commitment to prevent and challenge instances of abuse and discrimination. It's important to recognise that this is not a marginal issue. One in five people in the UK have a disability. And 80% of these disabilities are hidden disabilities. And the charity Crohn's and Colitis UK did a life in lockdown survey that showed over half of people with those conditions are concerned about access to toilets when they go out. And that ends up pushing people with chronic conditions further into isolation during this really difficult time. But positively, the vast majority, 83%, say they feel more comfortable visiting venues with the accessible toilet signs installed that are referred to within the motion. And we can be encouraged that town council officers have been working with North Somerset Council to explore becoming a sunflower-friendly council. Now, you may have seen the hidden disability sunflower on lanyards, on literature, on display at places like Tesco. And this sunflower enables people to discreetly indicate to others that they have a hidden disability and may need additional support, help or just a bit of extra time. So in conclusion, by backing this motion, if you will, and its resolutions, we will, as a town council, support both local people and visitors with hidden disabilities. We will assist local businesses to benefit from an increase in visitors. And we will demonstrate the Weston Supermayr Town Council is inclusive by enhancing our accessibility credentials. And I thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you very much.
I'll second that, Mr Mayor. I'm sorry, I don't have a hand function.
That's right. I was about to come to you anyway because I'd been told that you wanted a second. I don't know whether you want to speak to it.
If I may at some point. Do you want me to speak now?
Yes, please. A second is good.
Thank you. So I'm, I'm fully support the meaning and the intent behind this motion. We all have a duty of care as civic leaders to not only make policy, but also to enable others to adhere to them. Mentioned already are some hidden disabilities, but of course there are many more. Some heart disease isn't seen, multiple sclerosis, motor neurone and even Parkinson's when in early stages. Arthritis and even fibromyalgia aren't always visible. And of course, as we know from the many conversations about our public toilets, bladder and bowel disease can be one of the most difficult for social isolation because sufferers will not venture far if accessible amenities are not available to them. Just a few mentioned, and I know I could continue on, as I'm sure all of you would know. But I have no need, as I am sure all colleagues will support this, to allow dignity, respect and humility for those who need our, our support. Thank you, Miss Chairman.
Thank you, councillor Willis. Do we have any further speakers? Councillor Gibbons, please. It's the first one I've seen. Was there anyone else on?
Thank you. Yes, I'd just like to add my voice of support to this motion. It could be extended, I would say, to all sorts of areas where people with disabilities can have problems, you know. I know it's not the remit of this council, but when it comes to disabled parking spaces, I know of a lady who was reduced to tears by being harassed and shouted at by somebody because she was evidently able to walk, but they did not know what her underlying condition was or how far she was able to walk. She just seemed to be able and got a lot of abuse from somebody for parking in a disabled space, even though she had the badge and everything. And I know equally that people feel embarrassed and get sort of tutted in toilets in shops. Again, as councillor Codling has described, because they don't seem immediately to fit people's perception of disability. So I think this is a very, very welcome news and I thank councillor Codling for bringing the motion.
Mr Mayor, councillor Bell is indicating.
Councillor Bell.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. And I just want to join the chorus of agreement with the, with the motion first of all, because I do think it's, it's raising an important issue. North Somerset has a very strong disability access group and this is one of the recurring themes that comes up time and again by people with a range of disabilities, not just those with hidden disabilities, but also the more obvious physical disabilities and wheelchair users as well. So I really welcome this initiative. I'm glad that councillor Codling mentioned the, the sunflower scheme as well, because I think that has a really important role to play. And I'm certainly keen to see North Somerset Council sign up to the sunflower scheme as well and do more with the business improvement districts and other retail and, and leisure operators right across North Somerset and, and Weston to maximise the opportunities for accessible toilets and accessible services and facilities. And I just wanted to also say that we do need to do better on changing places and toilets as well, because North Somerset is really poorly served for changing places toilets, which are fully accessible to those with a particularly bigger wheel, motorised wheelchairs and more complex physical disabilities. And I think as a place that definitely wants to be open to all kinds of visitors into our community and to, to serve the needs of all the people who live here, we do need to do better on all of those things. So I think this is a really welcome first step and I hope everyone will, will support councillor Codling's motion.
Thank you, councillor Bell. Is there any other speakers for me tonight on this? I think that, I think Sarah Codling, I think that's quite a good endorsement from the executive member responsible for adult services. And I think, I think he'll obviously carry that forward with your support, I have no doubt, because you've introduced a mention on town council, but we can do so much more, can't we? So if there's no other speakers, again, I think this is such an important motion, I'd like to see those who are, sorry, Malcolm.
Councillor Payne is indicating, Mr Mayor.
Councillor Payne.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Just a quick question. Obviously, I'm, I'm totally in support of, of the idea of this. I was just wondering what the cost would be to the town council, with the signage and all the rest of it, and if that money has been identified yet. Thank you.
Thank you. So Sarah, please.
Yeah, I don't have full costs, councillor Payne, because I'd like to see if we have support in terms of direction, strategic support. The lanyards, I think from discussed this with Tania, I think they're £75 apiece from memory. So we could make some sort of investment to get a tonne of those. Signage, I think, is very much a choice of, you know, do you laminate a bit of paper or do you get a decent sign put up? We don't have a huge amount of accessible toilets within town council venues, so I wouldn't see it as being prohibitive. And that's about as much as I could say at the moment.
So it would be fair to say that it's quite minimal currently, but when we design and redesign, we redesign with those ideas in mind. So it doesn't become an additional cost, just a cost when we're going to refurbish anyway, I assume, Sarah.
I, I would hope so. And that is just one part of the resolution. That's a practical step, but there's, there's a lot more within it.
There is indeed. So if there are no other speakers, I'd like to go to the vote. So all of those in favour of this, please show.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
Again, that is unanimous. There is no one.
That's close to unanimous, Mr Mayor. I haven't quite gotten to the second page.
That is, that is unanimous, I think. So. I think you're in favour, weren't you, Jill? Jill, councillor Carpenter? Yes, you was. That was unanimous then. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Okay, so back to the meeting as written. And thank you for those motions. And I think they were good results for those people who put them forward. So to receive the notes of the youth council held in January, February 2021. Who's leading on this tonight? Because we, Sarah normally does. I don't, we have other councillors on it, though.
Sarah could pick it up, because all I'm going to say is how brilliant the young people are doing, but Sarah had.
That's fair.
Yeah, ditto. And also just very briefly, Mr Mayor, the point that you made at the last town council meeting of kindly suggesting you're extending your invite for these councillors to shadow yourself and maybe some other councillors. I conveyed that at the last meeting and there seems to be enthusiasm, that they're still a little reticent and shy and working online. But I did pass that on and I'm sure we will pick that up again when, when we're in more normal times.
Okay, well, I'm shy too, Sarah, so that'll be okay.
Okay.
So, but even if it's back to when we're in real meetings, I'm sure we can arrange for them to sit on our shoulders to see why we're thinking and discussing the ways we are. So. Any further comment on the youth council, please? Nothing further to add, Kieran?
No. Oh, sorry, I did the infamous didn't press mute. No, nothing afterwards.
Thank you very much, Jen. Those are noted. So the designation of town mayor and deputy town mayor for, there is a typo on the papers today, but I'm sure we realise it's 2021/22. Because there wouldn't have been anything to do in 2021, as I can, I can vouch. So, so designation for 21/22. Malcolm.
Well, Mr Mayor, we need.
The means proposed and seconded. It's not so much for me. Town mayor first, please. So if we can have a proposer.
There is a mayor.
Okay, proposing and seconding. Sorry, let's make sure we know councillor James Clayton. We're proposing councillor James Clayton. Proposed by councillor Peak, seconded by councillor Gibbons. All of those in favour, please show.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Can I not just sell James for you, please?
You can't send him back. You do that when we vote for him to become mayor next time.
Perfect, thank you.
This is just designation. You'll get your chance to say what a lovely chap he is and how much more handsome he looks without all that mott of hair.
What was he going to say?
At the next meeting, yeah. But this is just to get the designation in place.
Okay, thank you.
So all those in favour of councillor James Clayton.
I think that's clearly carried.
Yeah, that's clearly carried. And again, councillor Roger Bailey as deputy mayor, I have a proposer, please. A councillor Fox, and seconded councillor Crewe. Either one, whichever way it gets put down, Sam.
I'd like to propose councillor Bailey, please.
Okay, and then is that seconded by councillor Crewe? Yes, that is. So all of those in favour, please show.
That's clearly carried, Mr Mayor.
Carried. Thank you very much. So you get your opportunity to speak to those proposals, those are those proposals at the next meeting. So, and the secondings to the next meeting. It'd be nice to him then or horrible, whichever you want, but you can't take it away from him then. So going on to the approval of the draft calendar meetings for 21/22, this, this is over to you, Malcolm, isn't it?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. So I've circulated a draft calendar with the papers. There's one thing I'd like to amend in the actual dates, and that is expenditure from government. So I've put as 8th of January. That should be the 6th of January. So apologies for that one. I think the rest of it hangs together, but obviously the council can change anything. And of course, chairman, once appointed, can change any dates anyway. There is, so I'm asking you to approve this calendar so we can get things in diaries. The other part of it, there is a wrinkle, actually. This year, the date of the annual meeting and mayor making was set for the 20th of May, Thursday as usual. And of course, everybody, including me and the council, were hoping to have a proper mayor making ceremony for the new mayor. It's quite clear now that's not going to be possible and it's going to almost certainly have to be a remote meeting, even if it was on the 20th of May. There is, however, some uncertainty as to when you can have remote meetings because the current legislation permitting remote meetings expires on Friday, the 7th of May. It was done a year ago, so I suppose everyone at Whitehall thought it would all be over after a year. But obviously, that's. But obviously, that's proved not to be the case. There have been discussions about this at civic consultation with group leaders and the mayor and the deputy mayor. I have also spoken to councillor Bailey. And I think the general feeling is that in order to have create certainty, what you should do is bring the annual meeting forward to Wednesday, the 5th of May. I'll explain why Wednesday in a moment. And it would be literally just ticking the legal formalities of electing a chairman of the council and a vice chairman of the council, who are therefore mayor and deputy mayor, possibly approving lists of committee memberships agreed by groups, but then deferring the ceremony of mayor making and separating it out and doing that in early July. The date of that can be set by civic consultation and not council. The reason for Wednesday, the 5th of May, rather than Thursday, the 6th, is that there is a by-election for North Somerset on the 6th, and there may be members who wish to be involved in canvassing or whatever for that. So it would literally be 7pm on the 5th of May, would probably be all over in 15 minutes, and would just elect the mayor and deputy mayor. You'd have certainty then that they were properly elected in accordance with the legal requirements. And then the mayor making ceremony would hopefully happen early July, when you could have a slightly revised ceremony, but very similar to the usual one. So I would like to recommend that to the council for consideration, please.
Any speakers, please? Any amendments?
Well, any proposers?
So, Jan, councillor Holloway. You're muted, so keep trying to unmute. That's it?
Yes, sorry. Can I have clarification on heritage and arts culture committee meeting, please? Because to begin with, it starts as being quarterly meetings, and then from November, it's by monthly meetings.
Okay, I think that's because it's August and it's only the... Oh, we do have a tourism meeting then. Malcolm?
Well, it would normally be July, but there's a little bit of a fixture pileup in early July. So I did suggest a slightly earlier date of late June. And then after that, it becomes bimonthly. So, yeah, it would just avoid a... I think there's one in early May this year, so it does mean two slightly close together. But as I said, July just seems to have a lot of meetings, which is difficult to administer and sometimes difficult for members to attend. But you can make us a bit later if you wanted.
I think, okay, I think it's just a diary space, really, Jan.
Okay, thank you very much.
Anyone else? Okay, so does that need voting on? Malcolm?
We've got councillor Helen Thornton looking.
Yes, I need a proposer and second, please. And councillor Thornton is indicating.
Councillor Thornton would like to speak, and then...
Yeah, I was just going to raise that point, actually. So I'm happy to propose that we bring the annual meeting forward.
Okay, yeah, that will be... I don't know if we need to do that. I think I brought it forward. I'm not sure, Malcolm, but that's fine. If you'd like to propose the calendar, that would include the 5th. Helen, councillor Thornton, if you're happy to propose the full calendar, which would include the 5th of May.
Yes, I'm happy to propose that, although, you know, obviously, that meeting is not on this calendar, is it? June onwards.
Yeah, that would be in this year's calendar, but we've made the change that the request of chairman, I think. And were you seconded, councillor Bailey?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. So all those in favour of the calendar of meetings for 2022, please show. Thank you.
Looking, that's clearly carried, Mr Mayor.
Committee membership, item eight. Over to councillor Peak, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. Well, as councillors will know, this committee restructuring came about due to several councillors were commenting that they were finding the committee loads rather overbearing or difficult to attend. So this has been fully discussed at various group leaders' meeting over the last, well, 12 to 15 months. It's been regularly discussed at E and G, and finally, at last month's policy finance, where you can see there's a recommendation has been put forward for tonight's full town council meeting for approval. It might be useful to remember that the object of this restructuring is to reduce councillor commitments. With this in mind, as you will see, we are proposing that we will reduce the number of councillors on the larger committees from thirteen to ten, and smaller to eight councillors. You have the recommendation for policy finance, which I am chairman in front of you, and therefore I propose this council approves the committee structure.
Does that have a second, please?
There are seconders.
Councillor Payne, yeah, would like to speak.
Not really, no. I just agree with the proposal from councillor Peak.
No particular order. I have councillor Coddling.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Just wanted to add on what councillor Peak said, really, as being part of some of those meetings. I think it's important to note that it wasn't the sole objective to look at councillor workload. I think also we're looking at officer workload, and also I think it's the question of efficiency in terms of how we use our officer resource, but also in terms of decision making, because they say there's nothing worse than trying to write something by committee, and not necessarily lots of voices don't necessarily aid debate or decision making. So just wanted to explain to colleagues that I think it was a wider principle there.
Okay, councillor Bailey.
Thank you, Miss Chairman. Can you hear me? I mean, in principle, I'm not in favour of reducing councillor numbers. I can understand that the... Why would other people would want to think that's a sensible idea? But I think it's something that needs to be appreciated, that if you're... Okay, so Labour Group and Liberal Group have been out of power, but now they're in power. When they're out of power, it's very difficult to get a feel for what's going on in the council when you are not attending council group meetings or committee meetings, I should say. And so I think that there's also an opposite point of view, is that we should be keeping numbers... I mean, I think eight is too small. I perhaps understand 10. What I would want from the leader is, he says, smaller meetings. I mean, we need to clarify which meetings are eight and which are 10. But in principle, I don't think we should go below 10. Thank you.
Happy to reply to that, Mr Mayor, if you like.
I was just going to say, before you replied to that, councillor Peak, I was going to say that members mustn't forget that all members can attend any meeting. They won't be able to vote, because obviously you have to have political balance, regardless of who's running the council. But all councillors can attend meetings if they choose to, where they have interests. And of course, I assume can sub as well, so. Councillor Peak.
Well, just to say, councillor, that it is on the paper, on the recommendation. It does say that the large committees, which we all know which they are, you know, policy and finance, et cetera. So the eight councillors are the very small ones. So it is in the paper. And if I could just quickly respond to councillor Coddling. As leader of council, I'm here to represent councillors. I appreciate what she means about officers and staff, but I feel my role is to listen to councillors. And I understood that councillors, some councillors, were unhappy with the number of committees that they had to attend. So but I do take on board what she's saying.
Councillor Fox.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I think it's a bit of a silly idea to have even numbers, because you're going to get a deadlock. It needs to be an uneven number, like nine or 11. Also, if councillors find the commitment too great, perhaps they shouldn't stand next time. You know, I go to every meeting, or I did before this Covid, and, you know, I was happy to do so. That's why I stood, to represent the people that elected me, not to have an easy freeload in time.
I don't think there's any freeloaders on the town council, based on the fact that no one gets paid. And I do think you have to balance the fact that many members are working, and they do have...
They are.
Well, some obviously can't find it as easy as you do, but that's down to your credit and organisation, I'm sure.
Yeah, probably.
Yeah. So but your point has been taken, I'm sure. Are there any other speakers?
Councillor Payne is indicating, Mr Mayor.
Councillor Payne, like to come back in again.
Yes, Mr Mayor, I just wanted to say something following councillor Fox's comment about having an even number, because I thought it was quite ironic that at this meeting of PNF, where there is 13, it actually came to a tie, and the casting vote was used anyway. So I think that's not really much of an argument, really, in this case.
Okay. Any other speakers? Otherwise, we'll go to the vote, please. Okay, so the proposal's in front of you. We are voting on. So all of those in favour of reducing the committee levels to those in the report, please show.
Three, four...
That's carried.
Seventeen, eighteen.
I think we're up to 20, I was.
That's 20.
I had... Okay, any against?
One, two, I believe. Just a moment. One, two... Two, Mr Mayor. So that's carried.
Thank you. Any extensions, just for... After this, no. Thank you. Okay, that's carried. So item nine, committee terms of reference, events, grants. Malcolm?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. This is just to clarify something, which has been slightly unclear through the year. So at last year's budget meeting, the council did approve a sum of £50,000 for events grants. We didn't actually amend the scheme of delegation to committees. So grants remained under the previous document with community services committee. However, it appears that the intention was that these would primarily, although not entirely, be artistic and cultural events that would take place, perhaps primarily in the town centre, or they could be in other places as well, and had, to some extent, an economic element. So there has been a difficulty through the year of discussions about these grants taking place at Heritage Arts and Culture Committee, where most of the applications have been received, but then having to be ratified at Community Services Committee, which could, of course, take a slightly different view. So I've written this report, which has been circulated to members, and I won't go through it in detail, but my recommendation, therefore, is that for the sake of clarity, you transfer the £50,000 grants, events budgets, sorry, I think it's 50, to Heritage Arts and Culture Committee. So it's separate from the small and voluntary grants, which would remain at Community Services. Now, you could, of course, take a different view, but I think it would be sensible to express the allocate it to one of the committees. And Heritage Arts and Culture seems to have been the one that's done most of the discussion. And secondly, unlike the small and voluntary grants, we don't have a set of policy criteria and application guidelines for these. So it's been a little bit ad hoc. I mean, that's due to the pandemic hitting everybody, of course, and then the lockdown from March, and the rather hurried council meeting last March, for good reason. But if you do, whichever committee you refer it to, I'd recommend that you instruct them as a council to adopt some policy criteria and application guidelines. I'm sure Sarah would assess in developing those for the committee to have a look at.
Thank you, Malcolm. Sarah, do you want to just clarify, first of all, the figure? Is the figure correct, 50 or 60?
It's £60,000 going into next year's budget. So this is when this would come into, from first of April, £60,000.
Okay. Anything else you further wanted to add, Sarah?
Just to completely endorse what Malcolm said, really. I think it's been hard because of Covid, but I think it's hard anyway. It's been harder this year, because there's been not enough clarity around the purpose of the grant. It's made it very difficult to try and assist community groups when they're coming to us. And primarily, they're coming to me for conversations. So I really welcome some policy criteria around. So we're giving the right information of what councillors want to see with these applications. I don't think it needs to be so strict that we're reducing it down to only certain people. And certainly for the reporting process, as Malcolm said, would really welcome, because it did cause confusion with certainly our cultural partners sitting under Hack and the grant being approved by Community Services. So I'd certainly just totally agree with what Malcolm's just said.
Okay, so if I'm going to take the advantage, before I ask the chairman of the Hack Committee and any of those who might like to speak, I think it's really important that this is an events budget, it's not just for arts and culture. But I do really believe that we should have a committee that puts some framework about what we want to do, how we get best value, how we cover as many events as possible. What we're all looking for, I'm sure, is that Weston becomes a buzz place to come to, that the thing's happening regularly. You go into the centre of Bristol, you know during the summer months, something will be happening near the Dockside. We want the same thing happening in the middle of Weston, that people come here because they know. And unless we can make that change, people will still doubt things are happening. If we only have something on once a month, people will wonder what is going on, and they won't come along and support the things we're trying to put on. So, I mean, all I ask the committee to look at, and that is that they set up a split officer members group to look at what grants are really worth having, what are really worth supporting, what's going to get people and footfall into our town centres, and make recommendations to whichever committee they answer to that those events should be, and they've been well looked at and well supported. So we don't end up spending five grand and getting 100 people in town, because that doesn't add much value. Would councillor Crawford Hoy like to say anything?
Just to say, I think for the sake of clarity, if for nothing else, we need this to take place. And it does strike me, as the town clerk has said and the RFO has said, that it is the Hack Committee, which seems to be the right place for this decision making to be lodged, where the smaller grants for local societies and interests are dealt with, as already happens at Community Services. So I can really see no reason to object to this. And of course, members are always welcome at Hack meetings. Others do turn up occasionally, so, yeah, I support it, Mr Mayor.
We do need a proposer, actually.
I'm happy to propose it.
Councillor Crawford, seconded, please. Councillor Crewe. Now, anyone who'd like to speak, please?
Mr Mayor, councillor Thornton has been indicating for a little while.
Yeah, just following on from what you said, and someone else said about this being about central Weston. You know, I recognise the importance of central Weston in terms of, you know, if we have events in central Weston, people from outside Weston come to them. But we are Weston Super Mayor Town Council, and we cover a large area. So I just want to make that point, you know, because we've got councillors here from the world, not me personally, but I just want to make that point. The other point I wanted to make really was that the... In developing the criteria, I would like all councillors to have the opportunity input into that, not just members of the Heritage and Arts Committee.
Thank you. Do other councillors like to speak?
Councillor Bell is indicating, I think, and councillor Crewe.
Councillor Bell first, councillor Cruz then, and then councillor Bailey, please, and that all. Councillor Bell first, councillor Cruz then, and then councillor Bailey, please, in that order.
Uh, thank you, Mr Mayor. I, I want to um, echo the final part of councillor Thornton's point, actually, which is that I do think that we're a little bit putting the cart before the horse, aren't we, in saying that we want uh, this grant fund to be uh, administered by the Heritage and Arts Committee, because in the course of the conversation, we've agreed that, well, maybe it isn't just for arts and cultural events, it might be for other things. And I do agree with councillor Thornton that I think um, there's going to be a wider interest in what we might want to be using um, this uh, events budget for. So I, I do, it does feel to me that the right course of action is to have some sort of working group that comes up with the appropriate um, terms of reference for the use of the grant, and then we can decide which committee it should go to, because um, I, I'm not totally sure that Heritage and Arts will end up being the right place, but the more important thing is that we all have an opportunity to, to shape the approach, because I hope this isn't something that we just do in the coming year, but for many years into the future. And so it absolutely makes sense, as officers have said, to, to get it right.
Okay, councillor Crowe?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Supporting councillor Crawford-Hawley's comments. This is all about uh, what we might want to do with events. Yes, we recognise that it will naturally be town centre. In the past, we've held events in other places than the town with the other budgets we've had. But if you look at the Hack Committee, the number of grants we administer, the big work that was done in terms of the uh, museum being granted, the money it had and what we did with it, it seems to me that's the most likely place that can resolve the best issue to take it forward and come up with a recommendation.
Thank you. Councillor Bailey?
Uh, thank you, Mr Chairman. Um, I'm afraid, I'm not afraid, I suppose, but I agree with what councillor Bell has said. I think it's not as clear cut uh, in terms of that it should be applicable to Hack only. Um, it seems to me they've got a pretty sturdy workload as they, as they are, and I think we need probably a subcommittee on. This is the mayor, I think, has been suggesting. Uh, Peter doesn't agree, but I think it's something that, um, and as Helen has said, we need a wider uh, spread of views and not something, well, we don't know what Hack would do, but probably it does, it is best to go under Hack. But at the same time, I think we need um, a subcommittee, as the mayor is suggesting, to bring these ideas together. And we're probably a subcommittee who would come up with that terms of reference and ideas. Thank you very much.
Okay, are there any other speakers? Uh, councillor Clayton, please.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Um, well, as chairman of Community Services for the past two years, um, obviously, you know, when becoming chairman, one of the things I recognised was that um, Community Services was extremely overloaded. Um, and with conversations with other councillors, therefore the creation of the Hack Committee and to take on other aspects that were on uh, the Community Services agenda items. Um, I do believe that Community Services um, is still um, heavily loaded with uh, a lot of business to take care of. Um, last meeting, uh, for example, took in a region of two hours um, from start to finish. So I do believe that, um, you know, this needs to be um, discussed in another forum rather than Community Services. A little bit sort of conflicting um, opinions here, because obviously, you know, was it just not a couple of agenda items ago, councillors were discussing about too much work i- in relation to committees. Um, now we're discussing about forming another committee to discuss um, uh, the, the, the community budget. Um, nevertheless, um, my, my opinion is, is that it does need to be um, uh, discussed at a lengthy um, debate at another, another forum, whether that is Hack or whether or not we uh, decide to set up a subcommittee. Um, I'm for either, either one of those. Thanks, Mr Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Can I make a proposal? That um, we ask Hack to set up a cross-council working group to resolve the terms of reference in the guidelines, and they bring that back to Policy and Finance. That gives it to, anyone who wants to be involved in that can be involved, as I would like to be. I'm not on Hack, but if it's cross-council. Uh, and then it can come to Policy and Finance for ratification. Would that work, Malcolm?
Uh, yes, Chairman, you could do it that way. Sorry, Mr Mayor.
I'll second that.
Um, and therefore, those who wish to input into what we should be doing, or what it should look like, there'll be two opportunities. Councillor Bell, would that cover your concerns? Yep, okay. Um, and councillor Crawford, you'd be happy to set up a working group through your committee in the first instance to
Yes.
Terms of reference out.
Yes, no problem.
Okay, so I think
I'll second that.
I think that therefore, in the, in the short term, uh, Sarah, Malcolm probably removes item one in the recommendations, because we can't transfer it anywhere yet.
Yeah.
Um, and then we're just, so that becomes one, uh, the Heritage sets up a cross-council working group to resolve the terms of reference guidelines for event grants.
Okay.
Okay, so we've had a proposal.
So, sorry, could I just, on a point of information, for clarity, um, Mr Mayor, who sets up the working party?
Your committee chairman.
That's fine, so long as we all understand that, okay.
Yes, so you're, yeah, the, the Heritage and Arts and Culture Committee will run this piece of work, but they will present it back to Policy and Finance, so it gets an opportunity to be discussed in other committee as well.
Okay, yep.
Okay, I think that, I think that makes sense, as I just came off that one, that hadn't been discussed, so uh, unless anyone feels I've got that wrong, we'll make, take a vote on that. So all those in favour of that recommendation, please show.
Yeah, that's clearly carried, Mr Mayor. Nearly every hand went up, if not all.
Thank you very much then. So sorry to give you that extra work, but there you go. Um. Item number ten, town council strategy. Uh, I think I've got councillor Peak down on this one for, for, for presentation.
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. Um, of course, an easy one, I would imagine this one. Again, this is a cross-party uh, for, um, input into this over the last twelve months. So it's, it's a live document, it's ongoing. Uh, we've, we've noticed uh, an amendment where councillor Daniel Marcus Ashworth wasn't a, a long councillor, so uh, I think, Mr Mayor, I'm willing to propose as it, as it is. That's for the report.
Second up? Uh, councillor Tim Taylor, do you'd like to speak, councillor Taylor? No, okay, anyone would like to speak to this item? I, I think we did send it out with what the alter, what the amendments were, so you've had a chance to see that and it's only reflecting our changing environment currently.
Um, Chair, Mr Mayor, I mean, this is very much a living document, so the, the intention is to bring it back to council at least once a year, possibly twice a year.
Thank you. All those in favour, please show. It's clearly carried.
Clearly carried.
Any against, but they're asked, because all hands went up, that's fine, none, thank you. Um, the lease of the town quarry. Uh, I think this is a, 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 Malcolm and councillor Peak, I believe. So Malcolm, would you like to introduce?
Um, well, the town quarry's been under debate for several years, Mr Mayor. We've been quite cautious about assessing the costs of it, et cetera. Um, the advent of community infrastructure money has overcome some of those. It's been debated a lot. I think longer term, it has the ability to wash its face, if not uh, indeed run at a surplus. Um, it's been discussed for a long time with North Somerset, with the stable. Um, and it's really just come to council because acquiring a freehold or a long lease of land um, uh, under the scheme of delegation does require full council's agreement. So the proposal is for a thirty-five year uh, lease from North Somerset Council. Um, I think everyone probably knows, but at a peppercorn rent to operate the quarry as an arts, culture, heritage and general community uh, venue. Um, so it's, it, it's really come to you for permission for, to take the long lease on.
Okay. So councillor Peak, are you proposing this?
Uh, yes, uh, yeah, thank you, Malcolm. Um, yes, I, um, this, I think councillors will all agree, this is a, an exciting opportunity for us to use the quarry for town council uh, purposes. Uh, you've seen the report before you, and therefore as chairman of Policy and Finance, I propose this council approves, as per the items uh, of one to four.
And a second to councillor Crawford-Hawley, are you proposing to second this?
Yes, more than, more than happy to, uh, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. Do you'd like to say anything to it?
No, I won't take up your time, I'll simply second it.
Okay, fine. Anyone, any other speakers? Okay, so we have the uh, four proposals on the table. Um, all those in favour, please show.
Yeah, that's clearly carried, Mr Mayor, that's nearly everybody.
That's, that's unanimous, that is everybody.
It is everybody, yeah.
Yeah, thank you. I like it when we all agree, you see, that's why I like you to record it as unanimous. Um, so, um, item twelve, Blake Hay procurement. And I believe this is councillor Peak again, but also councillor Crawford-Hawley's, I've been gone, I'm on my list. Don't know if you'd
Okay. Thank you, Mr Mayor. Um, well, again, this has all gone through various committees. Uh, the Blake Hay, of course, is of, of a long, long-term, ongoing works that needs to be done. The Blake Hay needs to be running for when Covid is uh, finally uh, put to, to rest, we shall, shall we say, so um, um, I understand that uh, there's been some developments this week, which I'm sure uh, John will speak about in a moment, which is um, to do with recommendation number two. Um, there was an email sent through uh, this morning or yesterday. So yes, I'm, I'm happy to propose that we uh, go ahead with these three items. Uh, and I'm sure John will speak more on, on what he knows that's occurred in the last few days.
Councillor Crawford-Hawley?
Uh, yes, Mr Mayor. Um, I, I, I think actually this has all, all been discussed. Um, I, I'm simply going to, to second this as they, as the way for, I mean, we've had, obviously everybody understands, we've had terrible problems with the Blake Hay, um, as all theatres have had. Um, but we, we've come through it, we've had grants to keep us going, and now we have to uh, ensure that the theatre is up to standard for future productions and, and money has got to be spent. Um, we, we know exactly what it, what is happening, and the bids have been out, tender bids have been out, they've come back, they've been accepted. Um, uh, and it went before uh, the Hack Committee, and the recommendation is to go, is to go with it. I, I don't know if Sarah has more to, to offer in terms of the, the, the financial side. Um, but I'm perfectly happy to, to go along with the leader's recommendation there.
Sarah, would you like to add anything?
Yeah, I think just for, for clarity and to make sure members are um, fully clear and know what they're, what they're voting on. So, um, as the document said, as councillor Peak and councillor Crawford-Hawley have indicated, so it went to Policy and Finance. We renegotiated the two tenders to combine them to make some cost savings. So that was an instruction by Policy and Finance. There was also recognition by Policy and Finance that this would be an over-budget spend, so there is going to need to be use of general reserves. Um, we went, we then went to Hack with those revised tender um, proposals, and Hack unanimously recommended that we go with John West Contractors at a sum of four hundred and ninety-one thousand, two hundred and thirty-five pound. Um, as a local contractor, that's meeting our social um, and environmental concerns. They were, um, they felt that the one contractor rather than two combined contractors would be more beneficial to us, and so that unanimity was decided. So the um, the decision here this evening is to endorse John West as the contractor recommended through, but also to recognise and approve the use of general reserves to the tune of a hundred and thirty-three thousand, nine hundred and twenty pounds. So that's the decision for this committee. It, it does, as I've said, it did come up through Policy and Finance with a recommendation that it should be approved, but as, um, you know, for clarity, as per your standards and orders of financial recommend, but, but, the financial regulations, it is only full-time council that can approve the use of general reserves, so hence why we're coming to you with this procurement now.
Okay, any other speakers, please? Hmm, I can't see anyone. Okay, so we'll go to the vote, please. So, um, three recommendations, aren't there? So all three recommendations, please. Uh, please, those in favour, please show.
That's carried, Mr Mayor.
Yeah, I think it's Carried again, yes, clearly.
Not quite unanimous, but it's definitely carried.
Carried. Um, thank you very much. And item thirteen, some supplementary standing orders.
Um, Mr Mayor, if, if members will humour me, perhaps as a bureaucrat or perhaps as a lawyer, I like things to be in writing. You've been running remote meetings since last September. Um, I think it's good to just codify current practice, best practice, so that everyone knows there's a degree of consistency, they're not too prescriptive. To be honest, they're based on a a model from NALC, which I was lent by another clerk, but I've simplified them slightly. Uh, it would just be a supplement to standing orders to adopt temporarily. A longer term, you may want to review your standing orders. Um, but it would really just be some understanding, a common understanding of rules for remote meetings, um, when people are in attendance or not, and the fact that voting could be either by um, visual confirmation or a roll call, and visual confirmation could be either the, your hand or the hand in the system. So it's really just a little tidying up exercise for when you do have remote meetings. I totally recognise that many members would like to get back to physical meetings, at least for full council and for possibly larger committees. That will be entirely up to the committee and its chairman at the time to decide. So this isn't telling you to do anything or not to do um, anything, but just to create some uh, written consistent rules for when we do have um, remote meetings. So um, I, I'd recommend you just to adopt these for tidiness, really.
Okay, thank you. Uh, yeah, I think the, the first paragraph is, is, is the stay safe, where it's at the discretion of the mayor, the chairman of any committee or subcommittee will decide whether it is remote or not. So if uh, if subsequently enough committee members don't want it to be remote and we can, uh, want it, yeah, want it to be in person again, they can then ask their chairman to, to make it so, even during regulation lockdowns. So as long as we aren't breaking the law. Um, any other speakers on this? Look at that, okay. So do we have a proposer, please? Councillor Crowe, do we have a second to please? Councillor Payne, so um, all those in favour, please show. Again, that is certainly carried. Thank you. Right, thank you very much for, I think that's it. Yeah, that's everything.
That's all.
Thank you very much for attending tonight. Well, I think we did pretty well, actually, half past eight. I think moving things around probably worked quite well, gets people to finish.